Participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment to please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation.
Thank you. All right. So our first item is the tri-town shared services grant. Kevin, I don't know if you want to do an introduction before our health director Wendy Hansberry probably speaks to this.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. Thank you board. This is a continuation of the conversation that we've been having around the grant that Wendy and the health agents and directors in Middleton and Boxford collaborated on. But I would say Ms. Hansberry did run lead on this project and did some fantastic work with the state to secure the funds to allow us to find additional support or opportunities for additional support. What's in front of you tonight is the next step, which is the formalization of the relationship of the three communities. The grant's there for us to use, but we need to have sort of the the understanding of what we're going to be doing between the three communities operationally speaking. And what it does is spells out the partnership. It was the document itself was developed, the initial draft was developed by MAPC and shared with us. We made some modifications to it. I then asked the two town administrators to make their edits to the document to make sure we were all on the same page, receive those edits. I believe it was then recirculated to the health agents and directors for their their review. And then there was some final last modifications made earlier this week to the document. And now it's in front of you tonight for work session purposes for discussion and review so that we can keep this moving forward. Next steps if would be to go through edits or to take the edits that you might have. Once we feel comfortable with the document or the general direction, the document is the concepts behind the document and the path we're taking. I will then share it with Boxford and Middleton. They've asked that we review it and the details of the language first before we ask them to take it to their boards. So that we're not going back and forth with with sort of the exact language, but the more the concepts are good. And then I'll so once we get our language tight, I'll send that over to them. And our hope would be in November that we could hopefully take this up for a vote as well as the other two communities so that we can officially move forward, be in the process of onboarding the two positions that we've talked about, one, which is an inspector and the other being a public health nurse, which will be shared between the three communities.
Okay.
I did see Mr. I did see the email come in, but I apologize. I haven't actually reviewed because I till about 15 minutes ago, I was straight out with calls and.
I just asked.
I don't know, Wendy, if you want to add any more comments before we give you some feedback on the document. Is there anything you'd like to share at this point? Otherwise, we can just jump in and give you any questions or comments that we have.
Yeah, I was having a ton of mood. So Kevin really gave you sort of the overview of what we're looking for. Really excited to be able to move forward and finalize it. So hopefully we can get those edits this week and keep the ball rolling. Thank you very much.
Wendy, did you give us a quick update on who's involved and what's what's been happening since we last dealt with this and signed off on the concept?
So.
Whatever. Yeah, go ahead.
So so we did contract with MAPC to do a lot of the 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 grant coordination, which they have been doing. The state has asked us to put a work plan together. That's actually due tomorrow. MACP MAPC has put that together. The three health agents have looked at it and will send it in. And basically, it's saying, this is the stage we're at. We've, you know, we've had an MOU that is currently going around the three towns. We have drawn up job descriptions for these two positions and they are making their rounds. Everything is in progress and on track. We, the three health agents have had several conversations just to make sure we're we're all in the same place. And I played, you know, a vital role in making sure that the other town administrators from Boxford and Middleton are also in agreement on on how our progress is. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, you mentioned a work plan that's due tomorrow.
Yes.
Is this the annual work plan?
I believe it's quarterly.
Okay, I'm just going back to the documents. And that's why I mentioned this idea of an annual work plan. Okay, well, we'll talk about it with the document. Go ahead. Thank you.
Well, I think that they do have like, you know, there's one due every quarter. And so there is an annual that's sort of included in all of it, but they're sort of checking in with us. There have been a couple of meetings with the state regarding, you know, our progress and do we need their help or anything like that. MAPC attends those as well. So we're just, we're, like I said, we're in progress, you know, for when we had the when we received the contract, when we got it approved through the select board. Thank you very much. And and to now, we are on track. We are, you know, meeting those goals that were set at the beginning. And we're right, we're be looking at the MOU right now.
Great. Thank you, Wendy. Just a couple of questions for you. So this first agreement, is this a two-year agreement? And then the subsequent ones are three-year agreements?
So the original grant was offered back in May. So the state calls it a three-year grant, but yes, it is from at the moment of being signed, which was actually in this fiscal year until so for two years.
Okay. And then as far as the hiring, does Topsfield coordinate that hiring?
Yes.
With input from the other two towns? Is that how it'll work?
Yes.
Okay. And if another community, one of the three withdraws from this agreement, which they have the ability to do, does that impact our ability to get a renewal in following years?
Because of the way the grant is set up, it does require a minimum of three towns. We would discuss that. And I do know at the state level, there is interest in putting more towns together. So I wouldn't want to say a blanket yes or no to that question.
Okay, but we do require three. We would have to go find another town if we wanted to apply for the extensions.
Yes, it does require three towns. And my understanding from the state is there are several towns looking for people to join.
Okay.
Be included with.
And then a question about the commitment. It does say that if someone wants to withdraw, they still have to honor their commitment to the initiative. What is their commitment? If the two contractors have been hired and are supporting the three towns, what commitment is there on the part of a town who's about to leave?
And this might, this might be better answered by Kevin. I see him unmuting, but but well, you're unmuted, Kevin. So I can tell you want to answer this one.
Yeah, I think it's it's because the positions, this entire initiative is going to be 100% funded through state funds through this grant. There could be responsibilities like office space, for example, if somebody's been brought on as a contractor and they need to be in a space to a quiet space and the other two communities can't necessarily provide that. We might say, well, so and so is going to be operating out of your building for the next X amount of months until we find a better place for using a laptop. If the town or community was to provide a laptop to this person, for example, you know, rather than taking that laptop away immediately, you know, saying, okay, well, they're going to use it for the next six months while we work on getting a new laptop, something like that, I imagine, is what those types of commitments would be.
Okay. And I would like to mention, you brought up a laptop, which was sort of what I was thinking of an example. But actually, there is money within the grant to allow those positions to have, you know, those types of purchases, whether it's, you know, computers and printers and access to to those things. Those are covered by the grant. There's money there for that.
Properly of town, though, still.
Yes, it doesn't belong to the person. It belongs to the three towns. Yes.
I have a couple of edits, but before I give those, I just let anybody else with questions about the MOU, ask those questions or make any comments.
Wendy, I hi, just a little clarification on something. So these are Linda said, these are contract jobs. There's language in here about consultants and contractors, but they're they're part-time jobs. Is that correct? Are they full-time jobs?
Well, because they're contractor, they're they're hourly, but we expect them to be full-time.
Forty hours. Okay. And can you just explain, sorry, because I think everyone's heard this before, but can you just explain how Tops, I mean, we're we you went out and found the grant. So that's giving you some kind of authority to break ties or make final decisions? Should there be, should there not be consensus? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So Topsfield, because our name is on all of the paperwork, does have the responsibility and, you know, the the privilege to kind of have the the last word. But we have existing agreements with Boxford and Middle. So we would expect to have consensus among the three towns.
Okay, great. Thanks.
You want us to go first? Is that what you're saying? Lynn, you're going to go last?
Oh, I have some edits, but I'll let everybody else talk. And if no one's mentioned the edits, then I'll jump in.
Okay, just discussing the contractor part, I think it was a little confusing in one of them where when I read it, it sounded as if we were reserving the right to also go out and get other contractors. So I I changed the wording there. This is under four. I'm suggesting that it would say something like participating municipalities agree to participate in the policymaking of the shared health initiative and and procurement process of the shared contractors, each participating through the through their select board and then or designee shall be given the the vote. So there were some changes in that wording, but that was not the area that I was looking for. If.
Do you want me to go ahead, Dick, while you look?
Since I have one thing, this is one thing I'll offer. In number one, we refer to the for the purpose of hiring employees. I would ask that we consider changing that wording to simply say for the purpose of engaging and equipping shared and equipping hereafter shared health initiative, excuse me, and equipping shared health. The idea is to use the word engaging rather than hiring and employing. That I think it makes it clear. Somebody reading at a distance might think that we're hiring some employees and paying them some amount of time or something. Go ahead. And then I have others.
Okay, I'll jump in just on one and two. The appendixes A and B, those are still out of order. So appendix A refers to the job descriptions. But unless there's something that's being written up, Wendy, beyond what's in here, there is what looks to be a job description in appendix B for the nurse and then an appendix C for the inspector. So on page one, it says that the job descriptions are in appendix A, but they're really in B and C, it looks like. And then it says that the work plan should be in B. So that just needs to be cleaned up. The appendix is right there. And let's see. So the title of this initiative is the Shared Health Initiative. But if you actually look in the appendixes and it's a knit, but under time allotment, it refers to it is the Public Health Initiative, when it should be the Shared Health Initiative. So in both appendixes, that's just a wording change there. And we already mentioned that the work plan isn't in there, but you mentioned that that's going to be incorporated. And that was it. That's all that I had. Did anyone else have any?
On the job description, as you mentioned, I thought that there was that A was just blank and it was supposed to be job description and that what B I just accepted the language that was here and assumed that B was in some way the annual work plan, which didn't totally make sense, but clearly wasn't filled out yet. And that was important, my question to you, Wendy, about the annual work plan. So we're preparing a quarterly work plan for tomorrow for the state, but we do not yet have an annual work plan for this document. Is that is that a summary?
And I think I am a little confused, which I apologize for, because I'm not finding the language you're referring to. Kevin, where did we put?
Okay, what I was referring to was in two, where it talks about appendix B. But as Lynn corrected it, it's actually appendix A. But in there, it talks, the first beginning of it says, participating municipalities agree to develop and adopt an annual work plan. The annual work plan shall include a list of goals and priorities that the participants and on and on and on. So I was just because that's part of this document. And now I recognize that it's appendix A, which is, excuse me, yeah, appendix A, which is blank. No, it's appendix B, which is will be blank when we move the data to appendix A, that that is totally missing. So.
Right.
So it's what we're waiting for. And the question is, how does that? How does the quarterly work plan relate to what this particular document talks about?
So there is an annual work plan that the state gave us a template for. And I apologize, it got separated from this document as a whole. We'll be able to provide that for you. It's but basically, it's just saying what are over the two years, what we plan to accomplish, which is putting the MOU together, getting it adopted by all three towns, you know, advertising and hiring for the two positions. I'll make sure that gets put back into there. I apologize that it got cut out.
Well, that would be just that's like the kickoff things, but not the annual work plan, right? So.
That is the annual work plan for now. So this grant was unique in that we did not have to do. When you usually have a grant, you usually have to do all this planning prior to applying for a grant. You're supposed to submit it as part of the application. And so a lot of the application work was was assumed to be done after you got the grants.
Okay.
So a lot of that will look like, oh, wasn't this already done? No, this is actually what the grant is for, to build this.
So let me talk to item three. Then when I read item three, I apparently read it wrong because it indicated that reserve the right to hire outside consultants and consulting services. And I said, oh, so that's saying that in addition to getting the contractors, we're going to go out and get consultants. But I realized after the fact that that's probably not the case. All that it's saying is that we reserve the right to hire these contractors. I think that's what it's saying. It's not other people, correct? And if that's the case, then I would simply change the language to say reserves the right to, again, and these were engaged, to engage outside consultants and consulting services as shared contractors to fulfill. So it makes it clear that what we're talking about is hiring is the shared contractors who are outside consultants and consulting services, I guess. Is that true or not, Kevin?
I Wendy, help me with this one. I thought that the purpose of three was to allow us, if we if we bring people on as a shared shared service, to if we want to have somebody outside, if that person's overwhelmed or they're not able, they're not capable, or for whatever reason, we have somebody we want to bring in separate outside the grant, that we reserve our right to still hire an outside contractor to do the work that this person might be brought on to do. But if we have a reason to do it, it gives us that ability to do it. It gives us flexibility.
So the way I originally did it when I was simply say instead, reserve the right to engage other outside consultants and consulting services. So that's what I first read it as. But I, okay, if that's what it is, then I would say that we want to insert the word other in there. So it's clear that we're not referring to the ones above.
Wendy, are you comfortable with that? Is that that's how I read it?
My understanding as well.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Wendy, was that clear about the attachments that A should have both the job descriptions and B is the work plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Just some reading ones. I had some comments on.
Are they tweak stick? Are they not major?
They're not worthy of talking about here.
Okay, so maybe you could just forward them over to Wendy and Kevin.
No, there's one other one here, though. After the items, after the last item, it says this agreement shall take effect. The three-year renewal options are exercised between the participating municipalities. My question is, how would we exercise those renewals? Is that simply a matter of each of the towns approving a grant of three years, three years value? That's what the expectation is. Is that how we would do that? Because I think it's important to understand what will happen. The wording in here, it says at some point, it shall be continued. But the question is, what will we be doing when a new three-year one comes up? How will the town function with that? A grant approval?
My understanding is that as part of one of MAPC's jobs as the grant coordinator, when that final year comes up, part of what the work they'll be doing is to make sure that we apply again, as we're going to be invited to do for the next three-year term. And then I thought the language was in that telling us that unless one of the three towns like withdraws, you know, formally withdraws, that the MOU is going to continue on for the following grant period.
So that's, that's why the discussion, Wendy. I'm just trying to see what we're, what the board of each of the towns is signing up for. Once we do this, which includes that shall continue, the word shall on there. Once we sign this off, it seems to me that this one particular paragraph suggests that the towns appropriately would be approving grants in the future, three times, three-year grants. And at that point, a town can take the option of not approving the grant, it seems to me. And then that would affect the rest of the the agreement, the rest of the years that that agreement would or would not continue.
Right. So we have the option, right, Wendy, to say at the end of the two years and then going forward with three years, we're not interested in moving forward. We didn't think we got from this what we had anticipated. So we won't be going forward with the next grant, in which case MAPC will work with the other two towns to try to find a third town to continue on with the shared initiative. So we have the option at the end to back out if we're not happy with how it has performed.
I think the issue is if we do nothing, this is on autopilot for 11 years. Now, it's kind of what my question is. Or is it really on autopilot? Or do we get a responsibility for approving it each of the three, three things after the first two years and then after the three years, the three years, and then the third three-year thing? I don't know what that answers. Perhaps it's worthy of discussion. If you can think it through and provide an answer for us the next time we discuss it, that would be helpful. Just really understand what what the effect would be. Yeah, that's, that's all I have at this point. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, if that's, oh, go ahead, Kevin.
Sorry, Wendy, I thought you were going to say something in that in that if it's auto, as Mr. Gans said, is it autopilot renewal? Or if there's like a document that we'll all have to put the three communities continuing the MOA, in essence, I think is the question in that. Do you have a handle on that?
I believe that it is, it is sort of automated in the sense that there's no additional formal agreement between the three towns, but there will be, as with every other grant that gets continued, that form from the state, which says you are receiving money and the one that you signed earlier this year back in July. And my understanding is that is the only kind of paper that needs to be reviewed. And because our name Topsfield's name is on the grant, that would be our responsibility as or your responsibility as the select board to accept it. But the other two towns are participating in it through this MOU arrangement.
But it would come back to us, Wendy, to accept or reject the grant. So we have an opportunity at that time to do an assessment.
Yes.
Great. That was, that was the question. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Super. All right. Well, thank you very much for all your work on this, Wendy and Kevin. And we look forward to seeing it in its next iteration after the other two towns give you input.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I would just ask if you, maybe by beginning of next week, if you have edits, if you want to send them to me and Wendy, we'll make sure we incorporate that into the document before we get it out to back to the board and then to the other two boards as well, from a timeline standpoint. And I know, Stan, you already provided them this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And the next item is the adoption of multi precincts for Topsfield. So I see that we have our town clerk with us. Welcome, Beth. And Kevin, I don't know if you want to do any introduction here or hand it over to Beth.
Just I said it before the meeting formally started, and I'll say it again. Thank you to Beth and Aaron for the work that they've done to date regarding the re-precinct thing. It's been a lot of hard work, working hand in glove with the state secretary of state's office. That has the big maps up right now in her office on the walls. And she's had them on the desk. I've watched her, you know, por pouring over it. The maps were one thing that we've already introduced to the board. The next part of it is going to be the description of the precinct and how it's being divided. One thing I'll note is that with the redistricting that we all are aware of, we've we put on the agenda for today, approval of the precinct as we've outlined prior, so that with the redistricting, we could hopefully, there's some impact on the redistricting. So that's why we moved it up for today's meeting and why we're open for a vote tonight. Thank you.
Right. So the only thing that's new here, Beth, then, is the legal boundary description, because we already talked about the rationale for how you broke the town into two precincts and the need for it because of the census data and the growth of the town. So I don't know if you want to speak to this description or what you went through with the state and why you feel comfortable having us vote on this tonight.
Sure. This description is something that I, as Kevin said, poured over for a while. The initially, the state gave us this, the framework, and it was machine generated based off of the GIS mapping system that they used. So the computer came up with this description, and there were a lot of highlighted things that in then in turn, the clerk or the individual towns had to address and and come up with, look at the maps and figure out what the boundary was. What is it? A stream? Is it a street? Or what whatever town line, town boundary? Is it a river? So I spent a lot of time doing that. I conferred with Greg Crum, who is very familiar with GIS and is has been involved in the past. I don't know how active they are right now, but the mapping committee. So he, he was a great help. And then I sent, I got it together and sent it back to the state. And they in turn worked through it themselves on their end. Now that I had identified some landmarks or town boundaries and things like that. And they actually edited the the description and then sent it back to me with their blessing. So that is what, yeah, that's what you have in front of you today.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this description that Beth has put together?
I have the silliest of questions. That's more of a curiosity and not anything before I even ask it that I'm suggesting changes. But I'm just curious why one is one and two is two, when I feel like it should be the other way around, just because I read left to right. Or is that just, again, I'm not suggesting to change. It's more of a curiosity.
You know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why it came back that way either. That's basically been, they took it right off the map. And that's how it was on the map.
And honestly, I could have asked that question last time we had the discussion, but it doesn't really matter. And I'm not pretending that it does. I just noticed because when I held it up and I'm having trouble reading my printout, I just assumed that that was one. I'm like, well, you know, that's two.
Right.
Because I wanted to go one, two, rather than two, one. But it.
I don't, I don't know if it has to do with on the map. One looks bigger area. I don't know if that's how the machine picks things up.
I don't know. And it doesn't matter. I was just curious. I don't know, and it doesn't matter, I was just curious.
Motion to accept the 2020 redistricting, re-precincting, precincting, precincting plan for the town of Topsfield is presented by the town clerk dated October 14th, 2021.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes. Do we really need to proceed this on a timely basis? Because of what I think we're going to discuss shortly, is the redistricting that they're suggesting versus our precinct boundaries that we're suggesting? Should we wait until we get that redistricting being resolved?
No. And the answer is, the short answer is no. I spoke with John Barr today, and he is the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Census Division Lead Person Director. And he, I asked him that very question, should we hold off? And he suggested that all towns should just continue going forward. He, he knows that it's, you know, it's a little bit problematic, and they are out of their mind. I mean, I can't believe I actually got a call back from him today. I know they're going crazy with all of, all of this that's going on with the redistricting. And he said that we should continue. He said that at the very, what may happen, even if we, once we go through the process, send it to the state, and the LEDRC approves it, if the legislature does not adopt our precinct lines, and they come down with something different, and I have a comment about that too. But if they come down with different lines, then we have the opportunity to then go back to the LEDRC and change our, adjust our precinct lines. But he didn't recommend waiting. He said we should go forward. His concern with it is that the redistricting is not taking into account that very important plus or minus 5% that Kevin and I had talked about.
I was going to say, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was going to basically say the same thing, in that this is a thoughtful map. This is a map that has weighed in all sorts of things, like geography that makes sense, boundaries like roads, and that number that you're talking about, Beth. I will editorialize in saying that the legislature's line, they just basically seem to take a map and draw a line through the middle of it, and go, that's fine, that's cool. So I would strongly suggest that we stick with this, because of the two lines that have been drawn through town, one of them is thoughtful and makes sense, and the other one less so.
Right, and to just clarify too, I've got some more information today from my association, that what we're seeing from the redistricting, the redistricting maps is using 2010 census information. And so what we're seeing is two different colors for Topsfield may not actually represent the legislature as dividing us into two precincts, so much as they are just seeing us still as the 2010 world, as one precinct town, and they're just splitting our representation anyway. Because that is what they're doing to Wenham, right next to us. Wenham is staying a one precinct town in 2020, but they are, they are splitting their district representation to two. So I'm not even sure that what we're looking at, and we can't even figure out what this line is. I was speaking with a couple of different people at different times about what is this line? I don't even think they've picked them up as precinct lines. So the problem is going to be that we can, if the district redistricting insists on coming down with their lines, we could end up with four different ballot styles in Topsfield, which is my worst-case scenario. And I, I don't want to see that happen. And so in that case, it would be, it would be best for the town to maybe try to adjust. But then again, we need to adjust precincts within certain things. So it's, it's, John Barr and his crew are very frustrated by all of this, because the redistricting doesn't take any of that into account.
Thank you, Beth.
Well, this wouldn't, this wouldn't be the first time that we had a state legislature that was uninformed, working on facts that weren't appropriate, and playing with half a deck. And we've been there before, and we'll be there again.
Why don't we move to roll call? If there are no more questions, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Beth, appreciate all that work.
Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you for all the input for the letter that helped us get it, get it started. Well, we'll get to that later.
We will. Okay, so the next item is the social media update. So I don't know, Kevin, if you're opening this up, and then Marshall and Cam are giving an update?
So what I, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, we have Jennifer Forster, and we have Bill Whiting on the line for the next two items. If you're comfortable, I wouldn't mind, so that putting this after those two items, which is the cable contract and the sustainability.
Certainly, that's fine. Sure, okay. So we'll move to the Sustainability Committee, then. Kevin, if you want to open that up? I know that we have a document with a proposed charter. I'm not sure if you have the members in mind yet, if this group is formed. Maybe you can give us some information?
Yeah, so I, I'll open this, and Ms. Foster's with us, like I said, to provide any details. And is also a co-author of the document in front of you. The committee that we're going to talk about tonight is a little extra special to me. It was a committee that Zilly and Jen, and John Spencer and I spent some time on before COVID hit. And it was one of the items which, unfortunately, we weren't able to accomplish prior to John's passing. But it was one that he was very passionate about. And so tonight, back then, we actually had a meeting where we introduced this at a very high-level work session, where we introduced it at a high level, and then we tabled it. And now, what we're doing is bringing it back forward with a little bit more, I guess, detail and some additional thought behind the document, and the purpose of what the advisory committee will do for us. You know, we currently don't have a planning department, we don't have a sustainability department, but we're doing a lot of things around sustainability. We talked about that at our last meeting, and things we should be very proud of. But there's a lot of work that goes into it, from another departments, and volunteers that already support our efforts. The hope is, in a way similar to the ECDC, formalizing those efforts by appointing a body that can support those efforts on a week-to-week, day-to-day, even hour-by-hour basis as things come up. Some of those are, right off the top, just public education around sustainability, best practices, things about how we recycle, how we do our trash removal, and things of that nature. We've talked about introducing a composting program potentially in the years to come. We'll have to do a further study to see, you know, what it might look like, and possibly obtain grant funds to introduce it. But I've had a number of people reach out to me via email and phone calls in the office, asking if we are looking to do something like that. And I've always had to say, it's, there's a group we're working on getting on board that certainly are excited about the prospects of doing so. But once we have those people on, help with the capacity component of rolling something like that out. Stay tuned. You know, we talked about the pledge last week as well, and time constraints on reporting and building a plan around that. This group could help support efforts like that for opportunities in the future like that. Help identify existing opportunities for the town to take advantage of, that can create efficiencies, using technology that exists. And then being aware of identifying new technologies that might come into place in the future. Then lastly, we have our contract, a trash contract, coming up. And the timing of bringing this group on is really relevant, because we could focus a lot of those efforts in the next year, year and a half, around what do we need to do to reduce our waste and our flow in a thoughtful way, that could help show a pattern that we're doing better when we go to GRM to negotiate our contract? Because that's something they'll look at. What's our tonnage versus our recycling numbers? So those are just kind of sort of a tip of the iceberg, general ideas of what they'll be doing. There's a lot more items that Ms. Foster and others who have been excited to the opportunity when we've met a few times on this have shared. It's a great group, it's an excited group. I'm excited to work with them, and excited to sort of formalize, like I said, a lot of the efforts that are already underway in different groups or different individuals are currently participating in. I don't know, Jen, if you had anything you wanted to mention as well? I will say the document in front of you was derived, I should say, by the ECDC Charter, specifically made relevant for the sustainability components of it. And Jen was, like I said, a major contributor to the document itself. So Jen, thank you, and I'll just stop talking so you can now.
Yeah, I just kicked all my children out of the room. So thank you for the opportunity to bring this to the board. We're really excited about the opportunity to promote sustainability in Topsfield. We think there's a lot of great things that we can do, and a lot of things that we have been doing that we just haven't celebrated as much as we could. So Kevin mentioned community composting, community solar, something that gets people really excited, general education about waste reduction, and, you know, taking care of our ecosystems. And we've had a couple of pre-meetings, and also, we were at the Tomato Festival last month, trying to kind of drum up some support and get community feedback. And we got a lot of great volunteers and ideas from that event as well. So we do have kind of a shortlist of people that are interested in being on the actual committee. There are three other people besides myself. They all have some really great experience around sustainability, and are more importantly, willing to put in the time and the research and the effort to make Topsfield a greener community. We also have a number of people who are interested in serving on work groups. We've kind of bucketed into four different items. The education, energy, so like solar, for example, ecosystems, and one more. I'm trying to look it up in the charter. Renewable energy, preserving our ecosystems, education, and reducing our town's carbon footprint. So we're really excited and hope that we have the support of the board.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any input from the board on the charter that was put together? Or on the committee itself, on the concept? I'm personally very excited about the committee. I think there, we're very lucky to have people who are willing to step forward and do a lot of the legwork that we don't have the resources to do. So thank you to everyone who's interested in coming forward with this.
Say that last, in our last meeting, we obviously had a discussion about stuff. And one of the things that came out of that was ultimately that we had volunteers ready to step forward on one specific initiative. But I'm very happy to see that they're still willing to work, and in fact, take on this large initiative. I've been told time and again that we can always rely on volunteers, and this proves that. So I would be very excited to see this, this move forward.
I would second that. Jennifer, good work. I hope you can put together a good committee, and I hope you can continue to work forward. My opinion, you've got my support in trying to continue to move it forward.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for coming forward. But just from our purposes, looking at the town as a whole, one of our requirements is to have a Green Communities Committee, if we want to be able to participate as a green community. And I was wondering if, in some ways, it would be appropriate to kind of meld this into one committee? Because we, we have not had volunteers for the Green Communities Committee that I'm aware of recently. We had a very active one, it did it, but it actually just took so much time that the folks said enough, and essentially said, you know, we'll do something on the edges if we have to, but to keep the committee official, but we're really not going to be active in trying to make things happen. And I just wonder if we should be thinking about being careful here, but essentially renaming what's presented here, so to speak? Or essentially becoming, you becoming, Jennifer, you becoming part of the Green Communities Committee, instead of this titled community name? Just so that we have an official Green Communities, which we have, but it's not functioning? But an official committee that is functioning?
Kevin, could you speak to that? Who do we have on the Green Committee right now? Is it up and operational?
Committee is not, at the moment, it's defunct. And it's, the Green Committee, Green Communities Committee is very valuable. We just went through the process of re-establishing ourselves, because of the little bit of lapse in time we had. You know, most, all communities that are Green Communities, and there's a number in the Commonwealth that are, as Mr. Gant said, this committee is part of that process of being established and maintained. In my understanding, I think there's, there are some similarities, absolutely, but I think there are some differences as well. I think of what the ultimate goal of what the Sustainability Advisory Committee will be doing versus what the Green Communities, Green Communities is very much, you know, reporting components of the Green Communities, for example. Green Communities Committee, historically, were responsible for that component of it. That certainly, as you said, Mr. Gant, could fall into the bucket of what this group's doing. And Green Communities Committee, though, I think needs to still be standalone. In the sense that, I don't think we can get rid of the Green Communities, and then say we have a Sustainability Advisory Committee. I think states' purposes, they want to know if you have a Green Communities Committee. So I could double-check that as we're working through the process, to make sure that my information is accurate. Those are some of the things I've just picked up over the years around Green Communities. But, you know, there is certainly some overlap, but there's certainly some differences too, I think, of what the committees will ultimately be responsible for from a charter standpoint.
And I would, I would say that, Mr. Gant, you say that one of the problems that the Green Communities Committee had was that the work was too much, or the time commitment was too much. And so if we tried to roll that into some other group that is doing many other things, I fear it would bog down a new committee that has an energy and a group of people ready to hit the ground running, to say, all right, well, you can do all that stuff, but here's also this potentially large, time-consuming other thing that you didn't necessarily sign up for.
Do we have a charter for the Green Community? I can't seem to find one online.
What are you looking for, charter for?
A charter for that Green Community that says, committee, what that group actually does, what they're responsible for.
I have it someplace, I can't put my fingers on it. But clearly, as Kevin said, the Green Communities has a responsibility in reporting back to the state on a continuing annual basis. And Marshall, you're right, they, as I said, they backed off because of the work. But the work wasn't necessarily the reporting as much as digging around, finding grants, implementing those grants, that sort of thing. So yes, it would, it would be potentially additional work. But the Green Communities is not limited in what it can do. It has responsibilities, but it can be as big as it wants to be. I mean, it can be other things, as long as it relates some way to green. And it's up to us to put the final touches on it. But the basic thing is that it's going after some of the green things. It was just a thought, if it doesn't work, that's fine. But then we should remember that we still have a responsibility to maintain that Green Communities, and hopefully, we can find some volunteers. Maybe if there are several people coming forward for this particular committee, and we can't fit them on, we'll ask them if they'd like to be a member of the Green Communities Committee.
What I'll do, if it's okay with the board, I will follow up with Neil Duffy, who's the director of the Green Communities, who we've worked with closely over the last year to re-establish ourselves, and then some of the grants that we've applied for successfully. And I'll just let him know around the Sustainability Advisory Committee, and sort of how other communities, because I know other communities have multiple. communities, because I know other communities have multiple boards like this where they have a Green Communities Committee, official, and then there's other sort of advisory components of it. I'll find out from him so we can just sort of verify that what might be the best process going forward with a report and can sustainability advisory in and of itself do it, or do we still need to have a standalone Green Communities carved out of that, I guess, in a sense? So I'll get back to everyone on that for sure.
As far as the text, I think you were asking about that, Lynn. I would say that in the one area here where it talks about minutes, for example, we simply refer to the minutes as being kept in accordance with Mass General Law. I think it's simpler than trying to explain what kind of minutes you do because the Mass General Law may change. And so just being in accordance with Mass General Law. And then the remaining part of that sentence, yes, they need to be forwarded electronically to the Select Board Secretary, et cetera, whatever that is, keep that the same. In the area where it has composition, I would say the four members, that it would be, four members of Topsfield appointed by the Select Board, not approved. We probably approve everybody, but we can only appoint four. So the word appointed, Topsfield appointed. And then, and then where they were talking about the Select Board, rather than elected by a majority vote, selected by the Select Board. In other words, a member of the Select Board selected by the, by the, by the board. In other words, we're just going to go through a nomination process and then an election process to pick somebody for the committee.
My climate would be under the authority and responsibilities to try to make it consistent, as you mentioned, Kevin, with the ECDC. When it talks about advising and supporting the town administrator and the Select Board, I would change the wording slightly to say in the creation and implementation of sustainability initiatives and may include working with and coordinating with other committees. Right now, it's very general. It's that they will support the town administrator and the board in the creation and implementation of strategic planning initiatives that will affect town planning and policy. So I think the way I worded it is more in keeping with the advise and support role of the ECDC. I don't know how others are feeling, but.
If similar to the MOA that we talked about at the top of the meeting, if there's edits that the board would like us to incorporate, if you want to send them over early part of next week to myself, I'll make sure.
I think you got hung up. You still there, Kevin? Okay. Moving forward, oh, you're back, Kevin. You just got hung up for a little bit there.
The base.
You just froze, yeah. So, yeah, any other comments? The only other thing I would say is just take out the X members in composition and the stack shall consist of up to six members because at some time you may not have four members. So, but removing the X from there. But any other comments that people have? Yes, if you can send them over to Kevin.
Yeah. I don't know what I got.
I would just hope that Jennifer doesn't get confused and upset by all of this junk. So work with Kevin and get it cleaned up and we can move forward with it.
Yeah, I wouldn't exactly, I wouldn't exactly say this is junk. Jennifer and Kevin asked for input. And so I think they appreciate getting the input. Kevin, did you have something?
I was just gonna say, just one, two thoughts. One, on the makeup, it's an even number. We'll have six. I would maybe suggest that we make that five members of the community or three based on interest and or based on what the board's desire might be, just in case there's ever, if the Advisory Committee is going to make a recommendation to us or to I, then they'll be able to have a vote on that that could be a majority.
Okay. Well, would the ex officio, you be voting, Kevin?
Oh, good point. Sorry. It's a great point, Ben, Sharon. I think you're right. I mean.
So it would be five people with you there for discussion, but you're not voting? Usually ex officio doesn't, but.
Nope. Missed that part of it. I apologize. I was just looking at the numbers real quickly and I noticed it. So that's right. The other thing I was gonna say, the feedback welcomed and if, just like the MOA at the top, when we talked about that early next week, if you have thoughts, we'll incorporate and then we can bring it back to the board.
Great. But this is very exciting and we're looking forward to the group getting together and what you find out. Very needed. Thank you, Jennifer.
We're very excited as well. Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Jennifer. As I said earlier, Jennifer, this is good work. Keep it up.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item is the Comcast contract. So Kevin, I don't know if you have any opening comments or if you want to turn it over to Bill?
I will hand this right over to Mr. Whiting. But just say, again, between the last meeting and now, there's been a lot of work that's been done by Mr. Whiting. And I know, Mr. Gant, you were also, you know, supporting that effort. And I just want to say thank you to helping me with what I believe is the final, 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 final version of the table contract that we hope to get on the agenda for Monday in a final vote. Thank you.
To the most of my ability, we have a contract to sign.
The table of contents looks great, Bill.
It turns out, you'll be glad to know, that the lawyers organization claims their responsibility problems on their end for whatever the technical problems were that Mr. Gant solved, but we couldn't sell.
Since you mentioned the TOC, the only real error is that the last entry in the TOC does not say Exhibit Six and then the information. What's there is excellent and ready to be signed. In spite of that.
So the hope will be that the contracts, just for the work session purpose, we have a meeting on Monday. If there's anything that anyone finds between now and then, please let us know ASAP. Otherwise, this will be the document for you to vote on Monday.
Kev, just a quick question for me. We have a letter of intent or something around the senior citizen discount. A letter of some, does that get signed as part of this contract or is that also ran or something?
It's a side letter. But I mean, if we wanted to approve the whole thing on Monday, we can make sure that's up there. That hasn't changed since the last iteration.
No, I just, I don't even know it's set up for signatures.
I think on that, it would, we might, I think it's just, I don't actually think it is. You're right, Bill. Now that I'm thinking about it, I think it's just a side letter they provide us that we have for record purposes that they're just gonna do. I don't think we actually need to take a vote specifically on that, but it will be, I'll make sure it's a package for the, for Monday that it's part of that for the record.
Okay.
Great. I didn't have any comments. It looked wonderful to me, Bill. Does the board have any comments or questions? Clean?
Nope.
Time to get it done.
Well, the good news is that we have to have a similar document with Verizon. The good news is we've got a great document that if Verizon agrees to the same measures, we should have a very slam dunk contract.
Just cross out Comcast and write in Verizon.
Okay, so Verizon, we should have a quick Verizon solution theoretically. The only bad news is there's not a lot of time. The Verizon license expires on December 3rd.
Have you started those discussions, Bill? Are you in negotiations with Verizon at this point?
It's hard to tell. I thought we were in a parallel process, but I've never really seen any proof of that.
I see. Marshall's laughing, so he must have something to say.
Yeah, I just, it's, you know, you would think we would be able to tell whether or not we're in negotiations, but it's, you know, symbolic of this process that we're not really sure whether we are or not.
So I've reached out to Bill Hewig when some of the frustrations passed and I said, let's get a meeting with Verizon. We've already met with them a number of months ago to introduce ourselves and to let them know, you know, sort of how we envision the process, listen to how the process usually undergoes when they work through the process. So we know who the players are. It's kind of like the ground rules, maybe with a CBA negotiation. It's been a long gap, but to Mr. Whiting's point, we've come a heck of a long way. So we have a pretty good document that we can just say, here it is. And typically the contracts, they, what the clause they put in there is if you negotiate, if the other party, the other incumbent negotiates a better term, you have to make a change in the other, the existing incumbent's document. So what it really means is, and this is what we've been told, once you come to terms with one, it's pretty streamlined to come to terms with the other. So that's the hope at least. We'll see. We've been told a lot of things through the first process that happened, but that's what we anticipate. And I can see that being the way if we can make sure we just get there with it. So anyways.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Bill. We appreciate all your hard work on this and hopefully it's smooth sailing as you guys just talked about now with Verizon.
Good. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we want to go back to social media or go into the redistricting letter? Kevin, do you have a preference?
Um, if we do have Beth still on the line, we could just keep it moving for Beth's purposes and then maybe finish with social media if that works for you, Madam Chair.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. Okay, Beth, we'll turn it back to you to talk about this letter. And just a little background, everybody's well aware, as Kevin had mentioned, of the redistricting that's going on. So we're doing a couple of things. We are attending the public hearing tomorrow, at which hopefully this letter is approved tonight and it will be read at the public hearing. And we have other meetings going on with our Senator and the state reps to talk about the precinct changes that we just approved as well. But this letter, Beth, a great job in putting this together and thank you to all the board members for giving input into this. So I'll turn it over to you, Beth. Any comments that you want to make about this?
Basically, thank you very much for all the input for the letter. It was a quick turnaround and if there's any, I know I talked a little bit about it in the last segment when we talked about the agreement. So if you have any questions regarding this redistricting that the legislature's come up with, let me know.
Okay, Kevin, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, just from the redistricting, and we did cover at the top part a little bit about some of the concerns we do have, and that's the purpose for the letter. I'd emphasize that there's a very, very small window that we have to make any type of changes to this. And I say we, that the state will make any changes. And so the advocacy needs to happen in real time. And there's a couple of ways that we plan to do so, first being through this letter. Make sure it's on the record, it's clear what our concerns are. The second is that we were able to establish conversations today with our Senator Lovely, who contacted Senator Tar, who currently, as the proposal goes, would become our new state senator. I asked them, I said, we don't have a representative on the House side because the line they drew across the town is very problematic, creating quadrants and a lot of logistical issues and real cost issues that could come out of doing that. I said, who do I need to advocate for? I don't mind doing, I just need to know who the person is. And they said, well, let's, we'll talk and we'll get back to you. They got right back to me. I was very impressed. And they said, we're gonna set up a meeting, we being Senator Lovely and Senator Tar, with the two potentially new representatives on the House side, with both of them and possibly the Chair of the House Committee that's looking at this, and in the next 24 hours to discuss what our concerns are and the possibility, what primarily being looking to go to a single precinct, I'm sorry, a single district, like we've always been. However, if it becomes clear that's not a possibility, because there's a lot of other communities that are being split, that are smaller than us even in this area, then they really need to, as we talked about, split the district in line with the precinct. And so that meeting is in the works currently. I didn't get a confirmation on the date and time, but talking with the Chief of Staff in Senator Tar's office late this afternoon, they said they're working on the date and that we're hoping to have it either tomorrow morning at eight or in the early afternoon tomorrow, so that we can hopefully get some support in what we're looking at, having them consider changes for.
It's really interesting looking at the two maps, the 13th Essex and the 14th. Just about every town, other than Groveland, has been split, which I cannot see how this is efficient in any way. It's, the two reps have to coordinate with one another and they both have to get updates from each town. Each town has to try to reach out and coordinate so nothing falls through the cracks. It just, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
It doesn't make any sense. And you used the language in this letter of the division of the town is undefined and arbitrary. And Lynn, you just personified that that's the case. However, it's really aggressive language and, you know, my question would be, there are a lot of towns that are going to be in the same place, Lynn just said, if you look at all the different town lines. And while this letter makes perfect sense to me and I applaud it and agree with it and I would love to see them listen to it, you know, I wonder if that's not a little too confrontational or a little bit too much throwing up of the hands. And I could be overly sensitive to it, but that was the only part of this that kind of caught my eye as we're pissed off and we're gonna let you know it, you know?
I think I'm trying to contrast that, that their line was undefined as opposed to our line, which I, you know, our.
Logical.
Thoughtfulness, right?
Right.
So, you know, I understand what you mean, though.
Well, I mean, that would be my comment. I think that overall, this is, this is so simple and so obvious, it's the right way to proceed. You know, it's mind numbing to think this has to be, you know, there have to be as many phone calls and meetings. But I applaud the letter. I think it's a great letter and I think it's short and simple and to the point.
I mean, if I, the English language, I would say, it's hard to say the division is undefined because it's, it is defined. It's defined with a line. The reason for that particular line is undefined, if you know what I'm saying. And so I would actually just strike undefined and and just go with the division, this division of the town is arbitrary, because it is.
I think that's a good call. I think that's a good edit.
I have to admit that I noted those two words also, but I wasn't about to change them. But I do think that there is a problem with being undefined. Where is it undefined? They may have it greatly defined someplace. We're simply looking at what they, what there is a map on the internet, but it may be defined someplace. My suggestion would be that the wording would be, the division of the town is unclear to us because we don't have the detail. We have a picture, but we don't have a detail.
I mean, if I may, I would just go back to sticking directly with arbitrary, because while you're correct, Dick, that we don't have the detail, we have enough of the detail to know that their line cuts in a way that, that is arbitrary. It's not following, you know, any, even if it is following a road, even if, you know, there is some, if we were able to zoom in on the map and really see where their line goes, it still is arbitrary and we know it's arbitrary based on the work that Beth and Kevin in the State, Secretary of State's office just did in coming up with a non-arbitrary line through town. So I think to just be straightforward and to the point, this division of the town is arbitrary, because it is. You know, I, in my conversations with Kevin and others, I frankly don't even like that we're suggesting that we'd be okay with a line through town as long as it followed the precincts. I strongly believe that we should be represented by one person, whichever person that is, because clearly what they've done is they've taken what was Brad Hill's district and they chopped it up and they gave it to all these existing representatives, which, fine, that if that's what they want to do, have at it. Just don't do it by cutting through towns. You can, you can achieve what you want to do by cutting up Brad Hill's district and keep towns whole. And so that is the position that I would have. Go ahead and cut up the fourth, as it's known now, and make it the 13th and 14th and 16th or whatever the numbers are, but do. as it's known now, and make it the 13th and 14th and 16th or whatever the numbers are, but do it by keeping Topsfield and, you know, I don't, I, I don't, I've not been elected to represent Wenham, but I would say keep Wenham whole too. Um, we're only fighting for Topsfield, so I'll only care about Topsfield, but I would say that the, the people in Wenham and other towns would probably say the same thing.
To Marshall, I don't disagree with that at all. My, my question would be, given that this is rushed and, you know, something that has to be resolved quickly, are we more likely to get them to observe our precinct lines? Or more likely to get them to agree with, yeah, one district makes sense, that one town of 351 suddenly made sense? I don't know the answer to it. I, I suspect that they're moving fast and lazy, but I, I don't know the answer to that.
Uh, what I think is true, um, is, and by the way, it seems kind of odd that we're discussing strategy in a public meeting, but I'm pretty sure the state legislature is not going to be tuning into our select board meeting to hear us discuss our strategy for discussing it with them. Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure that if we made the case that we want to be one district and they still said no, then we'd be able to go back a little bit and say, fine, at least follow our line.
I'm not sure we're gonna have that chance to go back in a second time. These things are moving pretty quickly.
They are, but I also know that
controversy.
That there's lawsuits and the Secretary of State's office lined up to argue with them. So while they, yes, they've put a deadline of this for basically tomorrow or whatever it is, um, nothing's gonna be finalized, I don't think, for a while. Uh, there's, there's no way they can go from where they were on Tuesday to finalized in whatever they're, they think they're gonna be able to do.
Kevin?
Talked with the Chief of Staff in Senator Tar's office. He said that they're actually, they're targeting early next week um, to, to take the vote on it, apparently. So, um, one thing I would just sort of um, emphasize is that I think for the, on the record purposes, the letter kind of gives everything that we want to be considered, right? And then when I have the chance or we have the chance to speak directly with the people who are gonna be the decision makers, I can hammer home the point that we should be one. That's, that's what, and that's when, the fact that I have the meeting is my chance to now do the negotiating. Without that meeting and without a representative at the House right now, we have zero negotiating ability. So, um, you know, that's my position, is that I'm gonna, I'm gonna har- push hard on that. And then if I have to, after I, you know, bellyache, I'll say, and they don't come around to it, or maybe they tell me that they've had enough pushback from enough places that they're gonna stop everything and reassess and try to do just that, make everybody whole as one precinct. That's the hope, fingers crossed. But if they don't, they say you have, you know, one business day to, to give us your best, you know, something that we can support, it might just be fall back to that precinct line, just because there's so many uh, hurdles and issues from a voting standpoint and a logistical standpoint, like I mentioned, real costs associated with that. Um, that I think that's really problematic for the town, um, in addition to multiple reps.
From a strategy point of view, a- any, any other input? I know Marshall's take on this is, is just really focused on the one rep in this letter and address the precinct um, in another discussion. Is there any other concern about the strategy of this letter, which mentions both at one time, so we're on record?
I'm, uh, I'm in favor of the letter. I think it's well presented. Uh, however, my opinion, and I told Lynn the other day, don't waste a lot of time with this, because they're gonna do whatever they want to do. And it doesn't have anything to do with the voters of Topsfield want, or the voters of Wenham want, or anything else. They're gonna redistrict it. And if you read the paper, it kind of, it kind of puts a, kind of fits a slant on the fact that they want to increase the ability of black voters and Latin voters and Asian voters, but that's got nothing to do with it. Because in the back room, they're gonna redistrict to get their best uh, uh, performance out of an election. And in my opinion, uh, I don't have a very good regard for that process, but guess where the word gerrymandering came from? And, and it's all started right here. And that's what this is all about, in my opinion.
And, and you know what, Boyd, I don't disagree that there may very well be a futility to what we're doing, but uh, you know, I, I think we fight the fights that need to be fought, even, even if we're gonna lose them, because
Marshall, we gotta continue the fight and I appreciate that. I don't have an argument with that. Um, we gotta continue to try to do it. I'm just trying to say, this is where I think it's all gonna wind up, because they're not gonna listen to us, probably.
And that argument for one rep is in this letter. It's just that it also contains the issue on the precinct. I'm more hopeful on the precinct than listening to us on the precinct, because a- as you mentioned, Boyd, they have spreadsheets of um, trying to move towards equity and having the right composition within each town. But no matter how you slice us, it doesn't really change that composition in Topsfield. So they may be more open to saying, if it saves you from quadrupling your election expenses, we're fine going with the precincts that you already approved.
And to, and to be clear, I'm, I'm not pounding the table saying that, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, all things being equal, I would, I, I really want to push for the one town.
We're all, we're all disappointed about the way it's going, but that's the way it's going, in my opinion.
Cam, did you have something you were gonna say?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought I saw him leaning forward. I thought you were gonna say
You know, I have a really bad back, so I'm always constantly moving. Don't take it personally.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, I believe that we need to state in this letter um, that we would like our precinct lines honored. Um, I, I don't think removing it and then, you know, countering with that, I, I, I really don't think that's a viable option. I, I tend to agree that a split district is coming down the pike, um, whether we like it or not. And I would just like to minimize uh, having one, if not two precincts um, and ending up with four ballot styles. Um, not, like I said, we have, we would have the option to go back and revisit it and try to adjust it. But, uh, you know, a- as John Barr had said to me, it's, it's very difficult to do that and then come up with the 5% plus or minus. Um, so, you know, it's, you know, I, I really think our, our hope is really to try to get our, our precinct lines honored.
Beth, I have one, one
Was there an agreement to make a change uh, in that one sentence of undefined and arbitrary?
I think so. I think everyone was fine with taking out the undefined.
Just, just take the word undefined and out. In other words, the town is arbit- uh, the division of the town is arbitrary? Is that, is that it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I make a motion to
Oh, one more edit. One, one small, small edit, but at the end of, in that third paragraph, after divisive, divisive, some uh, divisive time, just needs a period. Oh. The end of the sentence doesn't have a period, that's all. Thank you. All right, Dick?
Yep. I make a motion to approve the letter with the two edits as discussed.
Any further discussion? Okay, one more to roll call. Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Beth. And Kevin, and everybody for your input.
Are we gonna be able to use your signature stamps on this letter? Um, so that we can, uh, uh, because I'm going to work tomorrow.
Are you emailing it?
I'm going to email it, yeah. But we, the way we, we set it up, we did put signature lines.
Okay.
You can use my stamp.
You can use my stamp.
Yeah.
I don't know if I have a stamp, but I can swing by tomorrow, because I was coming by anyway.
I can swing by.
I have a stamp for everybody.
Stamp stamp for everyone.
Yep.
I'll be by anyway, Beth, so I, I'll swing in.
Okay, so I'm planning, I'll email them out as the letter is addressed. We copied some people on the bottom and to the, the committees. And in addition to that, I'm also going to get our submission from the, the approval that you just gave on the, the precinct lines map. I'm going to get that in the mail immediately to um, the state to, to move that process along as well.
Beth, when do you need the signatures by? What time tomorrow? Because I, I think Cam was saying he could drop by.
Well, you can get a stamp to it. It's a, whatever's better for you.
What time do you need me to swing by?
Um, it, it, well, Debbie said she has a signature stamp for you, but if you want to swing by and, and, and sign it, uh, as soon as
You don't need any wet signatures. If stamps work, I don't know if you need a wet one.
I, I think, I think um,
Not official, not like a, a contract, so a stamp should be sufficient. I think that um, if, one of the goals is to get this out first thing. 8:05 if we can tomorrow morning, so
Okay, yeah, stamp it.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, um,
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
So our last item is the social media update and next steps.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. So, um, been doing some work on the social media front and um, I think the last time we talked about it in a work session, one of the things that I know in my mind that was really um, I was conflicted by is that I knew it was the right thing to do. We need to do this, but we need to do it right. And that's the most important thing, that we can do it where we're consistent with what we're delivering to the community, so there's a a high expectation and we deliver on it each time. Um, and that it's really gonna be the voice of the community, of our, of our team and the work we're doing. And so we gotta make sure we're doing it right. So um, I've talked to a number of communities about how they're doing it and um, what I think is gonna fit really well with how we do it and to align with how we've sort of handled this type of thing in the past. Um, for instance, uh, we have an employee who's paid uh, a, an annual stipend to maintain our town website for posting purposes, for example. Um, is that we look to bring some, have somebody dedicated to do the work around the social media component, build this, build the product, build the system, create the um, the playbook and how we're gonna use it, you know, um, and then execute that. And um, I've had some conversations with people to understand what that scope could look like. Um, and, and how that would, how that would work. And it, I really feel like based on the makeup or existing team and how everybody's so straight out on, and this needs on a day-to-day basis, this needs to be an outside um, um, component than, than our existing members of our team to do it right. Um, and I've talked to some people, I've talked to an individual who I trust greatly, who's done this before and um, got a sense for how much, what it would look like to build it out. Um, and then to maintain it. And so for instance, what I'd like to do is have somebody who's in um, around the clock, I should say, four to six hours um, on a weekly basis. They come to our department and meetings on Monday. They listen to that hour and a half on everything that we're working on. They come up with a plan of what they're gonna be posting during that week. And then as things come up during the week, additional items come up and they get posted. Not just the news of what we're doing, but also things that can make it interact, well, shouldn't say necessarily interactive as much as interesting. For instance, if we partner with the historic um, society and get some old photos of Topsfield and put them up there on a Throwback Thursday and have people, you know, guess where this location is, and then maybe put a, a picture of it today, what it looks up, looks like. Make sure you have videos that can accompany this, you know, meet your town hall employees, have this person come in and 45 minutes, have an interview with somebody and then put something up on the Facebook, uh, Facebook page about this is your town concom agent or health aide, uh, director, or whatever it might be. Um, but to do that and to do it really well, where we can engage people and then keep it interesting and fresh, we really need to make sure we have somebody who's dedicated to it. Um, and, and, and really that's their focus point. So what I'm proposing is um, that we bring somebody on to do that and that we do it at that, like I said, four to six estimated um, hours per week um, to do so. There's a couple of places where we can look to, to fund the position. We have the existing um, consultant line item, um, which we can utilize. Um, as well as the new revenues we'll be bringing in with the PEG. If we share PEG information on the Facebook page, that might be a place where we can draw some of the revenues down that are new revenues to cover the cost of having this person, because we're able to promote those, those resources as well as everything else we're doing. Um, the other thing too is that when we've done this in the past, before my time, but as I understand, for instance, when it was clear and apparent that we needed somebody to manage the website, they basically identified the person, the person received this um, a stipend, which would be roughly around what I think this would come out to from a cost, 67,000, I think is what this will cost annually. The stipend's five. Um, but in a sense, that's how they handled it before. So it's not sort of a new game plan of, of looking to, from a funding standpoint, to carve it out um, as new uh, funds necessary to, to, to do it and to do it right. Um, but um, I do, you know, coming back from the nuts and bolts, I am super excited about this. I um, I, like I said, I knew, I wasn't gonna get excited until we came up with something that I think can really work and work well. Um, and I think we've kind of come to that conclusion at this point, um, kind of walking and talking through what the possibilities look like, um, and all the different options that we might have. So um, anyways, I wanted to give everybody an update on sort of the, where we are with the social media components of this. Um, and then maybe get any type of feedback or thoughts that um, the board might have as we look to move this forward.
Kevin, who do you have identified, and maybe it's Marshall, maybe, I, I don't know, but who do you have identified as creating that playbook? And, you know, contemplating what the editorial pillars will be and how do we make sure that this four to six hour person, the COVID cough, what was that?
Probably.
How do, how do we make sure that this, you know, editorial person is a uh, more of a conch, uh, Cronkite, Brinkley Murrow, you know, type individual? We, we don't want editorializing, we don't want, you know, people taking creative liberty. I mean, these people are telling the facts, Jack. Um, so who's doing all that? And, you know, it's, it's the right way to go about it. You're nailing it. You're totally nailing it.
Thank you. Um, so I've got a couple of people I've actually talked with who have helped kind of formulate this, but also have shown an interest in possibly participating if it's something that does take a, on it. So, and they're people I trust wholeheartedly, honestly, that I know would do a, a good job. They have a proven record of doing a good job. They've um, um, so I, I think there's some people out there that I know of at least, who would put their hat into the ring. And there's probably gonna be potentially other people too, who, who might raise their hand. It's a really great opportunity for um, certain people with a, a work-life balance that they're looking for, people who might have been, you know, 40, 45, 50 hours in, in the office, who took a step back for personal reasons and, but they want to stay active and this is something that's right in their wheelhouse. Um, so there, it's, I know that this is a position that I think if, if we need to find someone really talented, um, I think that it's, it's a really interesting opportunity. I think that, that will be presenting
You can fill this position. It's not gonna be difficult.
And just to be clear, I know that this is termed social media and Facebook is a, a huge part of it in that that's the new thing that we're doing. That's the thing that we don't do now, that I think will go a long way towards solving what I see as a big problem with our communication. But we're also talking about taking the management of content on the website and putting it on this person as well. So it will also kind of unify our messaging uh, and our news stream, because that which is on our theoretical new Facebook page will also be on uh, on the, the new website homepage. So at least there will be, you know, it's, we're not creating a situation where if you're only somebody who goes to the website, then you're getting one bit of information and you can only get other, you know, the news content, like the, the more light fare will obviously only be on the Facebook page, but in terms of the important communication pieces, they will be equally available in, in all of these different channels that we have.
That's a great distinction, Marshall. And I mean, I think it's pretty important that our tone and voice be fairly consistent with this individual and that, and that's the way to do it. So, that's
Yeah, because I don't think we want to create a Facebook page and everyone's like, oh yeah, it's not on the website. But if you go to the Facebook page, you'll find it there. No. The important messages, the meetings, the pieces of news, all of that will appear basically in duplicate form in these two places.
And the hope would be too, I mean, it, I think once we get the establishment of the, of the Facebook presence, it's then looking at incorporating the website component potentially, but also then expanding out to maybe, you know, possibly even a Twitter account or an Instagram or something like that. If we're doing it really well and we're getting good feedback and there's other places where we can meet the people that people want to participate on. Um, if, again, if we can do it, and there's different, like Hootsuite and different products that are out there where if you sign up for multiple different uh, social media platforms, it manages it for you almost to an automated perspective. You gotta still get the content out there, but then it shares it into different places um, and, and such. So, um, yeah, no, spot on, uh, Mr. Hook. That's definitely part of the, the calculus is to make sure it's all unified. I'd also mention, and it's really important I say this, that and it's really important I say this, that the police, the fire, the COA, the library, they already have Facebook pages. Our rec director's already talking about doing a Facebook page. There are going to be individual departments that already have Facebook pres- pres- presence, um, that are doing a really great job about it. Um, but this will be a centralized location where the police were to post something, we take, we pull that right onto our page. If the COA does it, we can pull that in there as well. Um, so it's the set, it's a clearing out central housing of where all that information can be found. Uh, but if somebody wants to continue to just follow the fire department because they're really interested in what Chief's doing and her team, they can keep on keeping on. They don't have to sign up to our page, but hopefully they'll sign up for both.
I, I guess I've got to ask the loaded question of, does anyone disagree that this is the right thing to do and right direction for us to take? I, I, first of all, I, I don't disagree. But I'm, I'm not into Facebook. I'm concerned about social media in general. And I would hope, and I got to depend on you, Cam, and you, Marshall, uh, and, and Lynn, maybe you. Dick, you and I are too old to be involved in this probably, but, uh, I can't, I can't get there. So I got to depend on Marshall and Cam and Lynn to do that and hope you do it right. Because I don't want it to be another, uh, social media page when I go to, have you ever watched the movie that's on television called The Social Dilemma?
Hmm, yeah.
I'm concerned about that kind of stuff. And I want to make sure that Marshall said something a little while ago that I was appreciative of. He, he would like it to be a duplicate of our input to the town webpage. Now, if that's, if that's the goal, and I think it probably could be, because I'm sure there are a lot of people that would like to go to our Facebook page rather than our town webpage to try to learn what's going on. Because I think there are people that are more comfortable with going to Facebook than they are going to our webpage.
Which is the core kind of reason that we're doing this. It's the, it's the, the very basic idea of communication that, you know, you have to talk where people can hear you, essentially. Like, you know, if you think about it, in the Old Town Crier, he didn't sit back in the, the Apple Grove yelling at the trees. He stood right in the middle of downtown and up on a box and that's where he talked. Well, the fact of the matter is, like it or not, Facebook is where people are. And all you have to do is visit the dumpster fire that can be the residence of Topsfield Facebook page to know that that's where people are. Our goal right now, I mean, as we saw, when we as a board felt that we needed to make sure that we advertised a hearing, we had no choice but to task me with going to the residence of, of Topsfield Facebook page and saying, hey, by the way, this is happening and there's going to be a hearing at the meeting because we felt it was important enough to make sure that people knew. And then there were perceptions around that that, that weren't always great. We can avoid that by having our own Facebook page because then it's clear what role it plays. It is a uh, effectively a news source. And, and so that's why we need our own and not to rely on other people.
That is important. And I'm going to put some words in Mr. Gant's mouth because he has worked long and hard to make sure that our electorate is informed. And, uh, and if you guys can do something to make our electorate more informed, uh, more power to you. Boyd, I want to pick up on something you said. And you said, you know, you heard Marshall say that a lot of the content for the Facebook page would be duplicative with what's on the website and you are comfortable with that. But to be clear, it's not going to be one hundred percent. That's the only content that's on there. I just, I, I don't want you to think it's, it's only the web. I, I'm, I'm sure that, and I don't have a problem with that. I'm, like I said, I'm going to depend on you guys to put the stuff up there that our electorate needs to see and hear. I depend on you to teach me about roads, okay?
I think putting up a brand new, um, Facebook page that's very distinct and a news oriented, fact oriented, or just fun with no interaction would be a welcome break from the residence page because there's a core group that goes there and it just, you know, it kind of spins and it kind of takes on a life of its own. So if this is positioned as something very different, I think our market will expand greatly. I think a lot of people don't go there because they don't want the drama and, um, you know, the discussion that ensues there. So this being positioned as something very different and fun and newsworthy, I think, uh, will reach a whole lot of, a whole lot more people than even the residents of Topsfield.
Maybe it'll be just dry enough that those people who really enjoy the drama of the residence page will go, ah, this isn't for me.
I think Kevin teed it up perfectly with what he wanted, you know, the content goals to be for this. Um, and someone is going to attend meetings and is going to have their finger on the pulse and will run it by, you know, Kevin or whomever to say, here's, here's what I took away as the, the most interesting topics. That's a terrific way to start, Kevin. I think, I think that's great.
I also love, Kevin, the approach that you were taking that it's consistently updated. So it's not that maybe once every two weeks, something goes out there and people don't know when to check it. But if on a regular basis, you know, three times or whatever a week, there's something of interest there. Either to just brighten your day because it's amusing and it tells you more about the history of the town, or it's an update on something that's going on. But that consistent updating is key.
I, I gotta just, I gotta, I just got to point out a little quip here. Um, I can't imagine what this discussion would have been like when Gant and I became selectmen fifteen or eighteen years ago and trying to convince the board of selectmen at that one time that we should have a Facebook page. It's a totally different conversation.
Boyd, don't sell yourself short because I got to tell you, my mother's older than you and I don't think she puts her computer down all day long. She can't.
Um, Kevin, just a, a question on timing and money. Um, did you have a thought as to when this person was coming on? And you mentioned about the consulting line item. Um, was there also talk about possibly peg monies, just on an ongoing basis, how this would be funded?
Yeah, I think it's, it, you know, right now, it's obviously not a funded item in our budget currently for fiscal twenty-two. Um, but it's an important item that we need to work on and get, get on board. And it's not the first time that something's come up like this where we've had to modify our, our direction with, with a budget. Um, you know, I think in an ideal world, um, this would be a, um, a, a position, a line item in the salary and wages, um, in the TA's office. Um, we don't have that. We won't be able to do that until we go through the budget cycle. Um, so part of me says that for the remainder of this fiscal, we, we might look at the, um, the consultant line item. However, though, if we do bring a person on, um, as a, a, a part play, which is I did confirm Hamilton did the same. They, they hired the person, um, as an employee at will. Um, then we might have to create a line item and, and just plug it in there. Um, because the person would not necessarily be an existing employee either, you know, stipend in the person like they did with, um, Sue Winslow with the website and creating a line item in the peg. Um, as such, I'm not sure if that mechanically works. My next step from here though would be to talk to the town accountant and just find out what her perspective would be from a funding perspective. Um, I also want to make sure I do have a conversation early on and, and very soon with probably, um, Jay and, and the rest of the FinCom too, just to let them know sort of what we're as a whole, as a, as a leadership team, the direction we're heading and the importance of the position. Just so that as we enter the budget season, that they know we are going to be taking these steps forward. Um, and so they're aware of it and, um, if they have any thoughts, I'd, I'd welcome that as well. But, um, yeah, that, I think from the budgetary standpoint, um, ma'am chair, I think that's what, I, I, I still haven't landed on a, a, a hard and fast, um, way to do it. I want to talk with Catherine on it, but, um, I know there's a way to, to fund it. Just what's the, the most appropriate way? And I'll certainly keep the board updated as we kind of shuffle through what that looks like.
I would like to try to just confirm what you had said, Lynn, that this process will be outbound only. At least initially, this is not a two-way street. This is a one-way street, information out to the public. Is that true?
That is the intent, Mr. Gant. Um, we're going to have to look at-
Okay, that's it. Got it. That's the intent. That's where, we're not going to open it up to get stuff in, at least initially. Uh, what is your estimate range of cost per month?
Um, I think I budgeted at, at five hours per week. It would come out to about six, six thousand. I'm estimating six to seven thousand annually.
How much?
Um, at six to seven thousand annually at the current four to six hours. Now, if we transition in a number of months, the website over, we have five thousand dollars in peg that's already dedicated to that for that stipend, which would then, I would imagine come over to pay for part of or all of the additional hours it would take to manage the, uh, website. Uh, so the website component wouldn't flux, flux up, I don't believe that. I can't envision that going to- if anything, I see that going down and offsetting any costs that we might incur upfront now for the, uh, social media component. If that makes sense. Sorry. I'm, in my mind, I'm kind of piecing it, but it's, we have five thousand for the website. When that grows to that, that will cover the cost of the website. And if there's the cost to have this person take on the website is less than five thousand, whatever variance there is, we cover the existing salary that we, or, um, consulting monies that we put towards, that's six to seven thousand.
And Kevin, you thought that you, I'm, I'm sorry, Dick, were you finished? Were you finished with your question?
I am, yes.
I'm sorry. Um, did you think you, you have options for people to come in here and manage that? Like you, you, you already have ideas about who could be good? Great.
Well, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't kick this off until we have somebody who's going to be real and make sure it meets what we, you know, it's not one of those where, um, um, we haven't had a Facebook page for a while, um, and we got to make sure we get it right instead of getting it out right up the door. So I, and I have spoken with a couple of people who, like I said, I know are very talented, um, who've made decisions in their personal life, uh, that affect their work life in the sense that they've reduced some hours or they've, they've taken a step back and something like this would be right up their alley. Um, and they have experience in this world um, of either from a, um, um, a, a PR standpoint and/or uh, some municipal work that's geared specifically towards these types of, uh, platforms.
So in the simplest terms, it's not like a job that needs to start at any given time. So we have the luxury of waiting until we find the perfect person to do it.
Well, and waiting until you got the program put together exactly the way you want it.
I mean, I, I obviously, because I've been talking about this since before I was even on the board, think it's important and vital, and I want it to happen sooner rather than later, but I am fully aware of what happens to a project like this. If it gets off to a bad start, then everyone sours on the idea completely. Um, so I am smart enough to know that we need to, when we do this, we need to do it right. Um, and, and that obviously will hinge almost entirely on the person that we find to do it.
Hey Kevin, you, you and Cam and Lynn are young enough that you can afford to wait a little.
Oh, boy, put me in this time. You had me in the intermediate.
Listen, I, I rouse her.
Cam, and then there was me.
Yeah. Well, you're on the middle ground, I guess, Lynn. That's, that's, we clearly see where Boyd, uh, has slotted you.
Yep, yep, I got it.
Lynn, I was trying to be polite.
I know.
Kevin, are you going to, uh, pick up on the new design of the website to be the baseline design for this homepage?
So as I was talking to some people about this, as I mentioned earlier, um, getting some outside input on what, what's worked, what's not worked. I, I actually mentioned some of our branding exercises that we've been doing specifically around the sign, which is now transitioning potentially into some of the website and components and have a consist, consistent theme. We can build, and we would plan to build out the Facebook page in whatever our, our brand looks like. Um, so it's consistent on all fronts, website as well as Facebook. So that if you go to the Facebook, you go to the website, you're looking at the signs on the street, potentially they all have a similar, um, uh, flavor.
That's great. It's the right answer. Good.
Might have a rooster.
Martha's Hill to die on, the rooster. Um, all right, great. So you'll be in touch with FinCom and, um, with Catherine and, uh, come back to us with some more flushed out thoughts about this, but it all sounds great.
Yeah, no, and, um, yes, absolutely. Um, soon as I have gone through those steps, I'll certainly give everybody an update, um, on where we stand. And then hopefully next step will be tightening it all up, uh, either get a, a job description out there, a posting or a, um, um, a request for a proposal from a consultant who, if we go from a, a consulting line item potentially, and then um, layer in a schedule of building the, the, the product up and then when we're going to introduce and roll it out, which might be from the time we bring somebody on, it might be a month, a month and a half before we get the go button. But that's so that we get it right and we have enough material lined up so we can just go boom, 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 boom. So right off the top, we know we'll have uh, interesting things to provide the community with right off the bat.
Yeah, maybe. Sorry. No, guys. I'm getting all-
You're just leaning forward.
I'm interrupting, I apologize. I would just say, you know, just, just make sure that playbook is really good and tight. So if this, you know, part-time person, flake or has to do something else or whatever, we've got someone who can step in and it's just ready to rock and roll.
Absolutely, absolutely, definitely. And I, I, I would definitely love to leverage, uh, both you, Mr. Brown, and you, Mr. Hook, and all any other members, um, no matter what your age.
Are you, are you trying to say no matter how old you are?
Well, it's gonna be a theme coming through tonight, but I figured I'd go-
I think he's trying not to hurt my feelings again because I'm in that middle bracket apparently.
I'm just gonna stop, I'm gonna stay away from it, but, um-
We, we need to put out news on parchment. I'm going to go to Boyd.
But no, but I, I would definitely, you know, as much or as little as you, the board wants to be involved in, in helping set this up the right way in the playbook, as you said, Mr. Brown, um, absolutely would love the support. I feel like we are in a a great place. And the person we bring on, I would expect right off the bat to have some FaceTime with, um, both you, Mr. Brown and you, Mr. Hook, to sort of talk about what the expectations are and your expertise and share what you're, what you might want us to consider and, uh, in moving it forward and building that playbook.
All right. Great, thank you, Kevin. Um, all right, I think that takes care of everything on our agenda. So unless there is anything else that someone has, um, we'll go for our motion to adjourn.
Well, there's something very important. How many people are going to watch the Red Sox tomorrow night? And nobody, no, everyone. Hey, I can't wait to get out of here and watch the Eagles game right now, so.
There you go. Motion to adjourn.
Good night, guys. Good to see you.
Wait, 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 wait. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and a roll call. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
I'm already eating my dinner.
And Ms. Bermudez's aye, it passes unanimously. Now you can go, Boyd.